Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August tenth meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education. Thank you for joining us. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again for joining us. Mary, if you would please do the roll call.
Molly Lewis?
Here.
Laura Palmer?
Here.
Brenna Zymet?
Here.
Mary Granland?
Here.
Lorian Mueller?
Here.
Daddy Severson?
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
All right, thanks. Columbia Heights' mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we'll move on to the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. And we'll start with, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda. Laura, second. Molly, discussion on the agenda? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We'll move on to the announcements. August sixteenth, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there's a school board work session right here in the community room. And on October thirteenth, sorry, did I say October? No, I said August. I'm gonna go with August. August twenty-third, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room. September sixth, which is also a Tuesday, is the first day of school. And September thirteenth, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's another regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Stenvik, do we have any correspondence?
Madam Chair, we have no correspondence at this time.
Great, awesome. We'll move on to community and employee representatives, communication to the board. At any time during, at any time during this, or at any time, any citizen, sorry, at this time, any citizen. I'm a little rusty, it's been a month and a half. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. I'm assuming we have no blue cards? All right, we'll move on. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. And that contains the personnel report from August tenth of this year, school board minutes from June fourteenth, June twenty-first, and June twenty-eighth, and the treasurer's reports from April twenty-second and May twenty-second. I'm looking for a motion to confirm the consent agenda. Mary?
Second.
Second Molly? Any discussion?
I have one item, just to note that the personnel report includes Kyandre Lewis as a teacher, which requires a full board unanimous approval, as he has an immediate relationship to one of the board members.
All right. Yes? No, as long as we have a full board, per the statute. I asked the same question before the meeting, though, so you're not alone. You're not alone, I asked the same question. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We'll move on to discussion reports and information items. And we'll start with reports from members of the board. And Mary, I did have your name first, but Lorian has lovingly said she would go first.
I do have a short report, as I did, kind of take a little break during our month of July. But I attended the chair meeting just prior to this and had many conversations with community members over the July break as well.
All right, I can go next. I never go right in the middle, so I'll go next. I also went to the chair meeting prior to this meeting. I had a meeting with Member Palmer, and I have had several conversations with Superintendent Stenvik. Mary?
All right. So I have had multiple phone calls with Director Zymet and Superintendent Stenvik on our break. And then phone calls and meetings with Mayor Marquez Simula, Representative Feist, Senator Kanesh, and various students and families and community members, so as we are getting geared up to go back to school. So thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Brenna?
I have had conversations with Laura and Mary and Superintendent Stenvik, as well as my kids were able to attend Encore and really enjoyed the summer program. And because of COVID, like, my youngest had never been on a field trip, and he got to go on a bunch of field trips with Encore. So I just am really pleased with how great our district does with that kind of extra stuff.
All right, thanks. Laura?
Okay, I actually have sent a report to the community board. Because I was helped record it in the first meeting of the June, I think, by the college. Kind of applauding myself backwards. But I did have a school board work session. And then nine sixteen executive board meeting, that was the personnel committee. And then there was during the superintendent evaluation of the nine sixteen. Then I had the nine sixteen monthly meeting. And some items are noted is, one thing that we were notified of is that the mental health parents were, for intermediates, were actually awarded some dollars to give us some senior donations for being able to provide mental health services. And that's a third act of our district that was paid out. And we found out that the outpatient was one million, three hundred and forty-seven dollars, six hundred and eighteen dollars in interest. Which is a very sizable, a very, very sizable investment. So I've been looking forward to all the work things that we can help to provide for students. Then other than two, it was, just like all, all school districts, there is a kind of an educational age shortage out there. And we're very concerned and trying to come up with additional, additional strategies for the higher more educational assistance that are currently eighty-six vacancies with an emergency.
I can hear you, we can all hear you.
You can hear, okay.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, not getting an echo, okay. Do I need to repeat anything? Okay.
Dawn, you could hear her for the minutes?
Okay, so that's for the nine sixteen. Then I also attended the MSBA Summer Seminar. There were some great resources that were there, based around mental health resources, as well as some sort of, some equity work that we work in. Also, how to, how to basically work together when people are divisive, which I thought was, was some very, you know, some very good strategies that we can use to be able to get things done, I guess you could say. So there are some resources that are, I believe are going to be in your Friday packet. So I've shared the pamphlets out. I also attended the MSBA District Meeting this morning. There actually were only a couple of people, so we teamed up with the District Four and had a joint meeting and talked about everything that was, that was going on and finding out how, how, how people were, you know, what their fears and, you know, what kind of strategies they were using, and especially lessons coming out of COVID as to what we were, what each district was doing to, to improve the transition after coming off the summer break. So that was really interesting, and I hope we can do it again soon. I also had meetings, phone calls with everyone at this table. Thank you so much. It's been a very difficult time for me, and this community is absolutely amazing. I've talked to so many people in the community, and neighbors and different groups have been reaching out. And I am so appreciative of all of the support that I've received on a personal level. And I thank you so much. I'm very blessed, you know. And then tailing into that, there is actually a great organization out there called BeThere.org. And they provide a lot of resources to help individual people be able to reach out to those that are struggling. In my personal situation, everybody seems to understand and is able to say the right things. But when people are struggling with problems that we don't understand quite as much, we don't always know what to say. And especially with mental health right now being such a huge obstacle for so many people, that if, if anybody can do this, this isn't just a school organization, but they actually have a training certification that you can do, and it's free online. It's just called BeThere.org. And it, it's a way of being able to reach people that, that are maybe not, their situation is very troubling for them, but not generally understood. You know, people with depression, or they have other things. So I, I encourage anybody that, you know, that, that would be interested, because you do want to help. I mean, I found that most people do want to help and reach out, they just don't know how. So I do recommend it. And thank you all so much.
Thanks, Laura. Molly?
I don't have anything to report on, just some conversations with community members.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Stenvik?
All right, it's been quite a busy summer here for us. It's good to see everyone here today. We have been hiring new staff for the 2023 school year. And I want to let people know that we still have open positions, both licensed and nonlicensed, that they can find on our website. We think it's a really great place to work around here, so we're, we'd be happy to welcome folks to our team. Last week, Executive Director Niambwe and I attended the Minnesota Department of Education's Back to School Conference, and also the Black Men Teach Conference. A team of sixteen staff attended the U of M Lead Conference as well. And during our team debrief, we discussed key takeaways. One of the key messages that kind of ran through all of those conferences was just the, a good reminder of the crucial role of engaging with the community in the work that we do. And this week, Director Tuckerl, along with the principals and her teaching and learning team, brought together parents, students, staff for the annual goal-setting meetings that are also tied to Title I. And we are busy preparing for an excellent start of the school year. Scaling the Heights is the week of August twenty-fourth, or twenty-fourth, twenty-five, twenty-sixth, it's those three days. And then Welcome Back Week is the week of August twenty-ninth. And school starts for students on September sixth. I've had conversations and meetings with each of the board members, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Well, we get to begin this meeting by introducing our new Director of Special Education. I'll save all the fanfare for Superintendent Stenvik, but we'd love to welcome you up. Come up and sit up here by the microphone, please.
By the other microphone.
The other microphone, the one that works, hopefully.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and start then.
Go ahead, I wanted to let you have all the.
Brief bio, so I am pleased to welcome Director Sarah Godfrey to Columbia Heights Public Schools as our new Director of Special Education. She's coming to us from Minneapolis Public Schools, where she worked over the past seven years as a special education teacher, literacy content lead, and most recently, Director of Special Education. She attended the University of Minnesota Duluth, where she earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education with a focus on communication arts and literature. She earned her master's in special education from the University of Wisconsin Superior. She holds educational licenses in grades K six, so elementary, and then the grades five through eight, communication, English language arts. Holds special education teaching licenses, there's so many acronyms, in EBD, ASD, LD, and DCD. Perhaps Director Godfrey can, I mean, I know what they all are, but, sorry, folks, a lot of, a lot of acronyms. She also attended the University of Minnesota, where she completed administrative programming for her Director of Special Education, principalship, and superintendent. So comes to us highly educated and with a lot of experience. And so we're just really happy to welcome you to the district. And if you've got a, you can introduce yourself and.
Sure. So I'm Sarah Godfrey, the new Director of Special Education. And I'm so happy to be in Columbia Heights. My grandma was born here, on Madison, and grew up here. Moved to Duluth, where I grew up. And when my grandpa passed away, moved back down here. She lived over by McKenna Park. And so I spent a lot of time growing up in Columbia Heights, when we would visit and have lots of fun memories. So it kind of feels like being back home again.
All right, well, gosh. We, if you don't mind, we always offer it up for questions and comments, so who wants to jump in? Laura?
Welcome, welcome. Actually, it sounds like you're gonna fit in just perfectly right here, you know. You know, your, your education and your interests and apparently your passions are what we're all about, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Appreciate what you do, looking forward to having you here.
Yeah, I, let us keep welcoming you, welcome.
We're glad you're here, we're excited to see what the year holds. You have an important job, and we're glad to have you here with us.
I'm not gonna welcome you, right off the bat, I will, see ya. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna toss it, so, not welcoming you yet. What's your favorite color?
Oh, wow. Purple.
Purple? Why?
So my, my father was diagnosed with stage four pancreatic cancer when he was fifty-two. And the color that represents pancreatic cancer is purple. And so I, I have his fingerprint on my necklace today, and so I always try to carry a piece of him with me, if that's in, in the fingerprint necklace, or the color purple, just remembering him.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you so much for sharing that, and welcome. We're so very glad that you're here. And I look forward to, to working with you and the rest of the board and superintendent. So, mental health is something that's very near and dear to my heart, and I'm, we're so excited that you're here. So thank you for sharing that, and like, welcome.
Thank you.
Follow that word.
Yeah, right. Can't never be as cool as Mary. Welcome, I'm really glad that you're here. And I would just love, like, is there a part of special ed that you're specifically, like, passionate about? Or some part of your vision that we could maybe hear? Yes, I love literacy instruction. And really seeing what teachers are doing in the classroom and how we can build off of that is something that I think I'm the most excited about. And creating equitable experiences through that, too. But I think reading just opens so many doors for students beyond the walls of our schools. And so that's something that I'm passionate about and want to share with all of the staff, students, and community in Columbia Heights.
Awesome, thanks for sharing that. Well, thank you again, and welcome. We're excited to have you in this, at this community. It is a really tight community around here, and we're thankful for all the staff who choose us to, to get to know. So we're, we'll look forward to get to know you during, scaling the heights? You'll be in the scaling the heights stuff, we'll give you the official grand tour.
I believe Director Godfrey scheduled for the bus tour.
Yes, it's my favorite part of the week. So, yeah. Oh, Laura?
Yeah, and just another suggestion, too. I believe you would have been in District, oh, no, Minneapolis has their own special education. You don't have an intermediate district for.
For setting for programming for students? That's correct. I have worked with nine sixteen and two eighty-seven in the past, though.
Okay.
I've also worked in residential facilities, supporting students through, I was an English language arts instructor at that time. So I do have experience in those areas. I taught at the Setting for School Harrison Education Center when I was at Minneapolis.
Okay, well, that, that's wonderful. I mean, it's just such a great resource, and, you know, you know, and I know that they like to do a lot of collaboration. So be sure and take advantage of all of that has to offer.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, looking forward to hearing more from you as the year goes on.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you all in person.
We'll move on to Executive Director Niambwe, who's gonna give us an update on the Placement Center.
It's weird to be in person, yet I have to use Zoom and present to give me a moment to load up my presentation.
At one point, did anyone see like a lion's face flip up onto the screen? Did anyone else get highly distracted by that? I was like, what's going on? I can only hope that happened in the broadcast as well, so the other people could enjoy that. Buying your time, Karen.
You did a good job.
All right, great.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the board, good evening. I feel like it's echoing. I am here tonight to give you a presentation about the Placement Center. As we speak, my colleague, Louine Saavedra, is hardly at work, because we have a lot of packet that we're entering. She would have been here presenting with me, but I hope I can do a good job representing her. Our missions in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. All our core values will be represented in my presentation tonight. And I've come to fall in love with the new added line. Our core values are aligned with the board equity statement as well. This is a governance-only information update and no governance. So the Placement Center is the place that welcomes all our families that are new to the district. I have the pleasure of walking there daily to interact with Louine, welcome new families, and just make them feel welcome. The Superintendent Stenvik has ensured that we're focusing on customer service. So just that first friendly face for some of our new immigrant families when they come, whether it's Louine, whether it's the other people helping there, that place doesn't receive negative comments. And if we do, we try to work on them. We do assessments, we provide resources for families, connect them to Anoka County, and we provide information about transportation so that they can know and be ready for the first day of school. It takes a small village to enroll students in our school district. It's not just Louine, but we engage our special ed department. We engage our ELL department to do screening for language. We have early childhood, and we have other clerical. So during this busy season, we do add additional people who are temporary workers to assist with enrollment, because it gets busy. And so that's a small village, that once a child is enrolled, it was a contribution of several people. This is the only slide that you probably didn't see in the board packet, but I figured we ended the school year, and so as of June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, this was the enrollment in each of our schools. And I'm just gonna move. So in total, it was about three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six students. And you can see our elementary enrollment, and then our secondary enrollment. And maybe at the end of the conversation, we can talk about some of the activities we've done to continue to increase enrollment in our school district. New enrollment, these are, these figures are just new students who are enrolled at each grade level last year. And in almost every grade, we went up. And the high school had the big brunt of it, and we'll see that a little bit later on. And so it's good to celebrate when enrollment goes up, because we know that the funding that allows us to provide the service that we need. And then this is just another way of looking at new enrollment by grades. And you can see in pre-K four and kindergarten, that's where we always get a lot of students who are new to the district. When you look at Columbia Academy, seventh grade add more students. I can't explain why that is, but that's just an observation. And what was interesting, comparing this to last year's number, in every category, there is an increase. There was an increase, I should say. And here are the numbers for the high school. And I think if you remember well, last year, we had an influx of Ecuadorian immigrants. And I will show you the ELL numbers, and that contributed a lot to this augmentation in number of students enrolled. We also break down the data by ethnicity. As you can see, our Hispanic population is the number one population in all of our schools, except two. And it usually go Hispanic, African-American, Caucasian, and then the others. As, as you can see here, our black population is in second position, and then we have our white population. And these numbers also increased compared to the previous year. And we're not talking about a small increase, it's actually drastic. So when we compare our new enrollment for resident students and open enrollment students, we're still serving more resident students than open enrollment students. While the open enrollment student is up in the thirty-eight percent, we're still taking care of Columbia Heights families first. And we also have room for others from neighboring school districts. As you can see again here, we have, our Hispanic population is leading, and then our black population, and then our Caucasian population. So in terms of languages, the top, so if we go English, Spanish, Somali, has remained constant last year to this year. The change that we saw was with our Afghani immigrants. As you can see, we have Pashto and Dari, where, I wouldn't say two new languages, but those numbers are significant compared to last year. When we look at the families, there is one family of six, and then there's a family of four. And these families benefited from our summer reading program at Circle Terrace, a partnership that we had with the city. So I think we share picture, we may share pictures in some upcoming presentation. It was nice to see these children who came, two adults, who were helping them with their English. And they became loquacious as time went by. Patti, our ELL coordinator, was instrumental in being present, providing the resources. And so those families were welcomed into our community as well. And so we're glad to see that the diversity is increasing in our district, and the satisfaction is equally maintained. So here's the new enrollment for English language learners. I'll let you look at those numbers, and then I'll give you the comparison number from last year.
So just for clarity, before you go on, new enrollment, that's for the upcoming school year, then?
So this is last year.
Just double checking, okay, thank you.
So it goes for the new, we haven't launched any numbers. So this one forty-six that you see at the high school, the previous year was only sixty-one.
Wow.
So that speaks that influx of Ecuadorian immigrants that came in. So we more than doubled at the high school. And then the other one that was high was Valley View. It was one or two the year before, and we have one thirty-five. And there seems to be a story about Valley View. Most of our families who come from countries where they're in uniform, they like Valley View because of the uniform. I think they're maintaining that culture. The other school also had an increase, and so it was significant. So actually, when you look at our figures for English language learners, we went for about thirty or thirty-one percent, and now we're at thirty-four point five percent. And so that's reflected even in the data that MDE has. Our special education enrollment, new as well, there was also an increase. So we saw an increase overall as we are looking at this enrollment data from the Placement Center. So we also try to maintain data on number of visitors that came in. The number that I was able to pull from our technology director was eight hundred and four visits. I remember it was the pandemic, some people came, dropped, and left. Some people were serving in person, and so eight hundred and four. If you remember the number from, that I shared the year before, was about nineteen visits. So it quickly shows the difference when we were closed to when we opened up. So last year, while we came back in person, we have COVID protocols in place. We maintain our enrollment process. We placed some students in height from home, and we had many families who chose height from home. But the process that we used was that in the frontier, actually, even if you go there today, we still have that bin that we used again this summer. They can come, grab a packet, go home, fill it out, and bring it back. So we minimize the contact, but when we needed to follow up, there was a phone call. Or when they came, we used the social distancing protocol and was able to serve them in person. Because you can just imagine being a new family in the country, in the district, and to do that at distance didn't work. Our ELL, for ELL, we do screening, so all the screening were done in person because that would have been difficult to do over the computer. So that's in a nutshell, when we were welcoming families during COVID, we used mitigating strategies to protect our employees and to protect the families that were coming in. So this is new. When we got to about April, we decided that we needed to track the data and find out why were people choosing to come into Columbia Heights Public Schools? And so the data I'm showing you, so we collected about 115 parents. On this first question, it's a checkbox, so we give them three options. They have to pick at least three options. So that's why if you do the math on the data I'm about to show you, you're not going to come to 115. It's because some people only chose one, some people chose three, and some chose all three. So the number one reason why they choose to enroll in Columbia Heights Public School, they say it's excellent education. And the second reason is opportunities to learn. So you may ask yourself, what's the difference between those two? Well, Brenna, you just spoke to the wonderful summer encore program. That's one way of opportunity to learn. Our after-school programs add opportunity to learn. So all these offerings that we have is what people are attracted to Columbia Heights. You should see when parents come in for the pre-K4 and they say, we're full for the full day, we only have the half day. There is this unhappiness because they want to participate in this great program that they've heard. And so we often offer them to do the half-day program and then put their children in childcare. And so these again are these opportunities to learn where children have options in Columbia Heights. And the third reason I think you'll be proud of is that the diversity in the student population is another one. So as we focus on the equity work as the board has driven with the equity statement, it's now being reflected by the people. So the second question that we also decided to track data on is how did you hear about Columbia Heights Public Schools? And now, these are in percentages. And so 67% says friends and family. And then 6% say word of mouth. And then community event was at 5.2. So we're happy that we're tracking this data, but we know that families will come in and when we ask them, how did you hear about us? So-and-so told me. And so we're happy that the experiences of families are positive, and they're telling others, and they're coming here. So that's new, and we're glad that we're tracking that. That concludes my presentation, but before I ask if there's any question, earlier on, I showed you a slide about the numbers of students in our district. And one of our schools that we've been focusing on is North Park because of the low enrollment. And so ending last year in this summer, we've done a couple of things. So we've done table events in the community. We did the Forty-Niners Parade. We did one other event at Uset Park. Today, Sarah, myself, and Kristen were tabling at the meet and greet with the Columbia Heights Police Department. And then in addition to that, we also printed some lawn signs that knowing the location of North Park, we actually placed them in North Fridley to be able to attract families from North Fridley as well as families from Columbia Heights. So it's a couple of the strategies that we've done. And Principal Sussex himself has been offering tours to families. I was wearing my North Park t-shirt today, and I went to the New Brighton Community Center. And somebody read it and says, "North Park School for Innovation." I just toured there. And he was an older gentleman, and he says, "Yeah, we met the principal, my wife and I, our kids went there." And so we feel that the tours that Principal Sussex is doing, bringing in families who have never visited, will make a difference. One parent that came to enroll today, who came from Immaculate Conception, a little boy named Blake is going to North Park, and she says, "Can I tour the school?" I say, "Yes, you can. Give me your number, I'll email the principal so that he knows you're coming." And so those are some of those welcoming attitudes that we have so that families can see that we care about them and they can come. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Before we've, the curtains are not functioning. Otherwise, we'd lower it so you don't have to stare directly into the sun. I looked over there.
If I, if I just sit like this at Flocks?
But, sorry. I saw you all. It was just like, it was on the, it was on the side of Executive Director Niambwe's face. Then all of a sudden, it hit your eyes. But back to the topic at hand. Back to the topic at hand. Any questions about the placement center report? Brenna?
Yeah, I just wondered, when people are open enrolling into the district, how do you decide, like, which elementary school they will go to? Do they get to pick that? Or is that something that, like, is there an equity piece to like how you're picking where kids go? Or what does that process look like?
It varies. So we always look at where do we need students, number one. So our current situation, all the open enrollment families that are coming in, we're sending them to North Park. And there is a precedent for that. This was done in the district a couple of years ago. So that's one aspect of it. And at the same time, you have families who come in, they say, "I want that uniform." And so we have to weigh the cost. Do you lose a family by wanting to send them in North Park when they really want to go to Valley View? And so those who insist, then we'll send them to Valley View. But so we're always looking out to place them. And then there is also our transportation. So we pick up in Minneapolis, not all over Minneapolis, but in certain areas. And so the majority, so North Minneapolis, we have transportation, and then some part of Southeast, but not all over Southeast. And so in order to facilitate the flow of transportation, we'll also send the students in one building. But the choice option is still there when they choose, so North Park as STEM, as a uniform school. So we're responsive and attentive to the demand of the families.
This might not be something that you have direct data on, but with the increased number of EL students, how are, how are resources doing in the, in the schools? If there's a significant increase in students who need different resources, are we able to keep up? How's that going? Can I answer that instead of, after I heard that laugh?
Well, you've heard of the cross subsidy.
Well, I wrote down EL cross subsidy right here in my notes.
So that remains an issue. So we do try to do our best. And by trying our best is we look at the resources available within the district, and we look at partners. So Anoka County has been very helpful, as well as the Department of Education. For example, with the new Afghani family, the state is working directly with Ramsey County, and they have some resources. So we try to leverage those resources. Internally, as far as instruction is concerned, we look at the numbers in each school before we add or decrease the number of EL teachers. So the high school, which had the big surge, they're getting a new teacher who will be able to support. And then we have Padi, who's our EL coordinator. In our programming, we find different ways to provide services by also supporting the general education teachers who are servicing the Level 4 student so that the students are still getting service to, to stay true to the spirit of the law. And so do we have enough? No. Are we paying attention to what we can do better? Yes. And then we're leveraging our partnership with the community. So Anoka County, again, in terms of resources, we always get jackets and winter clothing. And so new families get to benefit from that. Partnership with the U of M, if they have professors who are interested in understanding trends that are happening, we partner with them to learn, provide professional development, and that's how we support our teachers and our staff.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that was thorough answer. Thanks. Other questions? Oh.
Raise my, did you raise your digital hand?
Twice.
It is. I had it school so I could see the slide and hit it. Thank you. Member Grandland, what's your question?
I have multiple questions. So a couple, I think, so I think what we've heard over the pandemic is that school districts across the state and really across the country have had reduced enrollment over the course of the pandemic. What, I mean, so with the numbers that you shared with us, are we close to hitting, like, doing some recovering from the pre-pandemic levels or back to that? Or do you know how far we have to go?
We still have ways to go because weekly Superintendent Stenvik and the cabinet, we received the update from the placement center. Once that report is sent, Brian looks at previous year to compare where we are. So we still have ways to go, even though we've recovered a little bit, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, if I can, significant difference between 2020 and last school year. I mean, 2020 was, we had a serious drop, so we're building, we're building back.
Yeah.
It kind of depends too. What we've seen over the years is there's been this huge bubble of students, and that bubble is currently at the high school. And so that's another thing that we're weighing out is as large classes are graduating and exiting and smaller classes are filling the, filling in. So, you know, that's another, another enrollment trend that we're, that we're looking at and dealing with.
Thank you. These are all very diverse questions, so I'll say that. So with all of the language needs in our, of our families in our community, what are the ways that we are working to meet all those diverse needs when we're reaching out to family? I already know about S'more, but I was wondering if there are other ways that we're doing that?
Yeah, so we've done some good work, and we're continuing to improve. So we work with four different companies to provide translation services and interpreting. These companies have also become good at the quality of service that they provide since the pandemic. So they have apps where you can do on-demand and you can have a live person. Their response rate is quite fast because they don't have to get these people traveling from their house to come here, but they can get on Zoom and move from one room to another. So that's one of the progress that we've seen. We still use the in-person interpreting, especially for the new immigrants like the Afghani families. We've been able to build some good relationship with the initial interpreters who will bring the families. We find out where they work so that we can see if we need to contract with that company, or if it's a company we already use, we maintain that relationship. There is, there are times when we're short conference time because all the other school districts are also looking for people. And so using the online version was beneficial to the point that we had to do some work back with the company because if people don't show up, we get billed, but they were able to clear those no-shows. And so it's been a partnership that has gone well. And your question is apropos because tomorrow, we're meeting with Propio Interpreting so they can tell us about the new expansion of the company and the services that they're going to be providing.
Thank you for that. Also, thank you for interpreting, for, for pulling apart interpreting and translating because they are two things that are different. So I appreciate that. Then my last question is with regards to the special education cross subsidy deficit and the increase in our sped populations, what are we doing, how are we working to increase enrollment, or I'm sorry, not enrollment, recruitment of the educational assistance?
Anything and everything, Director. Our new director, Godfrey, back there is, that is, that is definitely a challenge. Some, you know, job fairs, different posts in different places, word of mouth. Director Hennigens and I met with our Monarch, the bus company, and they have paras on the school buses that oftentimes, when their morning route is done, will spend the day at the bus terminal waiting for the afternoon route. And so we're working with them to partner and hire those folks on during the school day, and then they can also do their afternoon routes as well. So things like that, you know, just, you know, some similar examples that, it's really making those connections with, with the folks that we're partnering with. The staffing shortage, though, is, it is real, and, and so I'll just put another plug out. This is a great place to work. If anyone knows anyone, please look at our website. Lot of openings.
Yes. And, you know, just to, for those people at home, like, the EA recruitment and the shortage is not unique to our school. It's not unique to our state. It is across the country, unfortunately. So I, but I'm really excited to hear about partnerships because I think as small of a community and as tight as we are, we always like to hear about partnerships and what are we doing to create those. So it warms my cold social work heart to hear, like, it's not really a cold social work heart. But I do love to hear about working together to find those unique partnerships and how can we build on our successes. So thank you so much.
Other questions?
So you had mentioned that the full-day program for the preschool is full. Is that something that, like, we're able to expand anytime soon, or do we have plans for any of that kind of stuff?
So that's not under bone, Executive Director. So I'll take that one. That falls under VPK voluntary pre-K. And we are allotted so many slots each year, and we, Coordinator Tiffany Grahams, and under the direction of Kristen Stonk, works really hard to fill all of those slots. And we fill them all. There, when we have this conversation every year, so there are currently three sections at each of our elementary schools, one full day and two half-days, which means we are able to service or provide service to 60 students. On the flip side, we could fill two and only provide service to 20 students. So it is a conversation that we have every single year about what's the right thing to do. And believe it or not, we do have families who prefer half-day only. And sometimes that's developmentally appropriate for some of our younger four-year-olds. But no, the, the number of slots that we get is through the voluntary pre-K program from the state.
Okay.
Good question. I was wondering it too, and I've kind of forgotten that info, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great. Thank you so much. We'll see you soon, hopefully.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the COVID update and the start-of-school plans. And like to welcome Director Bennett, and it looks like Director Godfrey.
This is going to be a real hybrid presentation.
Superintendent Stenvik.
They got it.
They got it, okay.
I didn't read it because I was like, oh.
They got it.
Chair Siverson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, myself and Director Godfrey are here to present an update on COVID as we approach the, the school year starting in a couple of weeks. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity, reaching every learner, all belong, all succeed. And looking at our core values that do tie to the School Board of Education equity statement, focusing on collaboration, courage, and innovation. And this is an informational item only. So to begin today, District Administration, including Principals and Directors, Superintendent Stenvik, and Union Representatives, did meet for a COVID team strategy meeting. We discussed the vaccine clinic coming up, masks, ventilation systems, testing, reporting, quarantine, and coverage. And then at the end, we also just got some feedback and input from members just about the, the school year and some concerns they may have. So to start, there will be a vaccine clinic September 1st, which coincides with open houses. Second dose will be the 30th, time four to seven, District Center. It's supposed to be a mobile clinic, so it'll be a drive-through. It'll be for all ages. It's not just COVID vaccines, it's other vaccines that students may need for the start of school year. There'll be an online registration, and again, with a drive-through format. We're still working on all the details, and there will be communication being sent out, but we're just putting the dates out there so people can get them on the calendar. As far as masks go, right now, wearing masks in schools and indoors is recommended. Plans for COVID funding for the next school year. Plans for COVID funding for the next school year don't include the cost of providing masks as we have in previous years. If there is a local surge, as we monitor, masks may be required for a specific classroom, grade level, building, or across the district. As far as ventilation systems, we conducted a comprehensive analysis of fresh air exchange and HVAC systems, and there's new upgraded ventilation systems for large gathering spaces. I'll pass it off to Director Godfrey. He'll talk about testing.
Sure. So, our plans for COVID funding for 2022, 23 do not, however, include the cost of every other week staff testing. And so, the Department of Health has sent a survey out to schools using their 2020 enrollment to receive tests at that amount of enrollment. And so, each principal and many adventures, adventures, our childcare programming also had the chance to fill all of those out this week, and hopefully, we'll be receiving those soon. And that will be on an as-needed basis.
Then, as far as reporting, staff will continue to report to myself any positive case or if they have questions about exposure. Student cases will report to the school nurses. The COVID dashboard on the district website will not be active, but the district COVID team, we do continue to monitor and track case rates. So, it's more of an internal things. We do track, for example, staff positive dates, when they can return, when they can remove their mask, if they had any exposures to other staff. So, it's still tracked along with looking at its numbers. And the district will follow, and Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC guidelines for quarantine and exposure as we have in the past. For quarantine and coverage, again, we follow CDC and MDH guidance. So, right now, they do have a shortened quarantine period that was in place at the end of last school year that went from 10 days down to five days. Last year, we faced issues with covering classes just due to lack of subs, people being sick, family members sick. So, we did increase the teacher sub rate, which will hopefully help get more teacher subs. We have an elementary sub to cover the three elementaries. We've actually asked each school to establish coverage rotations, so just if you can't find a sub, your teacher's on-call, or the elementary sub is busy, to really have rotations, not always pulling the same teacher, the same specialist to cover classes. District support, so last year, District Center support as we could, lunchroom, recess, in the classroom. So, again, providing that supportive need-be. And again, telling people, staff and students, if they are sick, stay home. That's our update. If you have any questions?
All right. Mary?
So, a couple of questions. I know that masks are not going to be required, they're recommended, and the school district's not providing them unless needed at the classroom level. How is that, like, how does that look? Like, what are you looking for specifically? And how does that look in elementary school where the kids are primarily in one classroom versus middle and high school where they're switching?
In terms of determining case rates?
Yeah, in terms of like, so, you know, is it this, this one English class, is it this group needs to wear a mask? Like, how are we, how are we determining at the classroom level in those varying settings?
It's a lot easier in elementary school, in our experience. So, we've, we've, we have a lot of experience with that in elementary school. So far, at secondary, in our, the past couple of years of experience, we haven't found a specific concentration unless it was on a, on an athletic team. You know, we've, we found a concentration there, but that's really tricky. And so, you know, it could be all eight, all eight of those classes, it could be the whole school. We haven't had to deal with that one yet in terms of secondary. So, we've had to, we've had to pivot and move in ways we've never thought over the last couple of years. Yeah.
And then, so, how are we communicating all of these changes to families?
Yep.
Especially with, you know, Director Bondo's, new boy's report about all of our, the diversity and language and things, because I suspect that this is also going to be a continual moving target, as it has been. So, how are we letting families know what to expect?
Well, that's why we wanted to start today with this strategy meeting. So, we had representatives of each of the unions present to give the perspective from their role on what, you know, what some of these ideas and decisions and approaches would, would take. And we, we spoke about that very thing, that all of this will have to be communicated to parents. There was a comment about, well, what if we have a student who's coughing a lot? Can we, can we ask them to put a mask on? And so, that's, that's an example of all of that would have to be communicated to parents, that that would be a possibility, you know, so that we would be able to know what a parent's preference is. So, yeah, communication will be coming both from the school level and then also the district level.
Awesome. And then, my final question is, so previously, the COVID tracker has been public, and it was noted that it's not going to be on our, on our website any longer. Can you tell us, like, why that change happened?
Yep. There's just so few cases right now. There's just really so few cases. And, you know, we'll be, we'll be hearing from other stakeholders as well. And, and, I mean, honestly, if there's a huge demand for it and people, if we're fielding a lot of questions around that, it's, it's, you know, we're open to that. But for right now, there's just, we didn't track over the, we tracked over the summer, but didn't maintain that dashboard, because we just saw there's so few cases at this point. Which is interesting, because COVID is still around.
Bang, yeah.
You know, so we personally have found it very challenging to poll, and as the Board knows, because I attempt to provide you with the, the local updates, and it's, they're, they're hard to poll and track in the same manner, because the county is not maintaining their numbers. So. So, that number, that information is going to be available. And if we're seeing a, you know, it happened this summer at, at one of our summer encore, one grade and one classroom. If we are seeing some cases pop up, that's when communication starts happening to families. And, you know, that's where the mask conversation starts happening.
I guess, and one, so speaking of masks, it's not covered in our, in our COVID funding. Is that from the federal and state level, or is that from, like, us? Like, how is, how did that get determined?
So, COVID funding came in different waves, right? And, and ideally, working with the Finance Department, our ideal was we knew that we would have funding needs for year one, two, and three, and made a, made every attempt to parse them out as equally as we possibly could over the three years. But the needs in the first year were so great, so that pulls from year three. The needs, surprise, Delta and Omicron in the last school year, so that also pulled from year three. We just found it really important to cover the immediate needs as we could. And so, so the, the year-three funding was going to be smaller anyways, but we did, you know, we did need to pull from it, even though we really tried to set, set aside as much as possible for year three.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Brenna?
Yeah, I too. At the vaccine clinic, are we doing boosters?
Yes. At any, any, any type of COVID vaccine booster, all ages. And then, there will be additional, and I, forgive us, we're not the providers, the healthcare providers, so we are waiting for some more specific details, and it is coming. But they will also have health professionals on-site that if a student or a child needs any type of immunization, they, the nurses can tap into the Minnesota system called the MIC and really verify what vaccines a child has and what they need and provide it. They're bringing in a mobile clinic unit. So, whereas in the past, early, you know, earlier on in the pandemic with some of our first vaccine clinics, it was only one type of dose for this specific age. This is the first time we're, we're able to offer all-ages boosters as well. So, it's pretty exciting.
That's huge. That's awesome. Okay, and then, I guess my last question is about the changing standards. So, like, I know when it was really bad, it was like, if you had two symptoms, so like, if you had a headache and a stomach ache, you have COVID, go home, you can't come back for a week, right? And so, I'm just wondering, like, if any of that has changed and, like, what that's going to look like? Because, I mean, just hearing from different parents, I know that I had heard, you know, like, people were, "Don't go to the nurse" kind of stuff, right? Like, we were kind of nervous about some of those things. And so, I'm just wondering what that looks like and what families can expect as far as those standards are.
So, we, my understanding or our understanding is that the CDC is going to be releasing new updated guidelines for schools. And when that happens, then the Minnesota Department of Health, they filter through that and then provide guidance to us. And one of the documents that we really relied upon for the last couple of years from the Department of Health has been the decision tree. And so, we're hoping for an updated decision tree, and we really need to follow that. But we will continue to encourage students and staff who don't feel well, who have symptoms, who are coughing a lot, to stay home. And I know that that's hard, but that's, that's what we're going to continue to encourage. So.
Are we requiring, like, PCR tests to come back still?
It just, it's going to depend on the, the guidance that's coming very, my understanding is coming very soon.
Okay, great.
So, it's, again, sorry, moving target. But that's why we want to start, you know, a little bit earlier, so that when, you know, before school starts, we'll be able to provide the utmost up-to-date information that we have.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move on to the Metro ExU membership. Like to welcome Teaching and Learning Coordinator Emily Gardner.
Hello. It's been a while since I saw you on Zoom. Good evening, Chair Saverson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Start sharing my screen here. All right, so I'm here this evening to share information about our Metro Educational Cooperative Service Unit, or Metro ExU membership. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. The core values that will be addressed in this presentation are excellence and innovation. And of course, our core values are aligned with the CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. So, this tonight is an information item. It will be an action item on August 23rd. So, Metro ExU has been around since 1976. It supports programming and services through collaboration with metro area districts. Through this cooperative, districts are able to access services while reducing their costs through their collaboration with Metro ExU. Services that have been supported in Columbia Heights through this partnership are listed on the screen. Some to highlight would be our professional development has been supported in multiple areas, which has included professional development opportunities for our affinity group for staff of color, as well as admin professional development. So, as recently as last week, we had admin participating in letters training that we accessed through, through our partnership with Metro ExU, the literacy training that we would not have been able to provide to them on our own. Also, support for student services and special education, as well as quite a bit of programming that our students have participated in. So, our participation, like a lot of things, looked different last year, but those numbers are there. In the past, we've had participation in all of these areas. But again, even, even in last year, our knowledgeable participation through Metro ExU was high. We did take advantage of professional development, PBAS support, and special education training. And again, these numbers are not reflective of our participation in years prior to COVID. If membership is approved, these would be our proposed participation areas for the coming school year. So, again, professional development, student enrichment opportunities, praxis, para-pro assessment as needed, multiple networks. So, I mentioned the affinity group. There's a metro-wide affinity group network. For example, the Center for English Language Learning and Achievement, library resources, and cooperative purchasing. And we've already had some opportunities to meet with Metro ExU to discuss what their support for us could look like in the coming school year. The membership fee is a flat rate of $1,000 plus $1 per pupil, based on the October 1st count. So, the fee for CHPS for 2022, 23 membership would be $4,258, which we believe is a reasonable amount for the number of activities we participate in and the benefits we receive through our partnership. So, again, this is an information item this evening, but on August 23rd, we will be seeking approval of the membership to Metro ExU for the amount of $4,258. With that, I will address any questions you might have.
Any questions? Laura?
Yes, as far as the, the co-op purchasing, I was wondering how often we participate in those, in that purchasing, because, because you can save quite a bit being able to team up with other districts with their needs. And I was wondering if we're getting the full benefit out of that?
That would be a great question for Director Hennigens. I know that we have participated in order to get different pricing and reduced rates for things, but I'm not sure about the specifics of, of the purchasing that we've done through them.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren?
Just to make a comment, that I've been serving as our Board's liaison to Metro ExU for a number of years and, you know, attend their annual meeting. And it has really been, you know, they provide great services and opportunities. And I think even just 10 students participating in knowledgeable gets a, you know, worth the money that we spend on that, in addition to the professional development and all the other avenues for that. There's a really, a lot of great opportunities for students to participate in some of the programs that they have, not just the professional development piece, which I think is also important in the affinity groups, but there's a lot for us to take advantage of. And I know that Superintendent Stenvik is also serving on the Executive Board, and it really provides an opportunity for our students in our district. And I think the, you know, we look at a lot of membership fees that, you know, we look at, and have another one coming up here later, but this one, this one makes a lot of sense for us as a district.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts' membership, and that would be me. I was talking with Superintendent Stenvik and Lauren at our chair meeting. I'm like, didn't we just, didn't we just do this? But no, that was the Minnesota School Board Association we've talked about, and the National School Board Association. And now, we're on to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. And this, I serve on this, I serve on the Board for this group. And AMSD is a cooperative group of, as it states, metropolitan school districts. So, I would say the vast majority of metropolitan school districts are part of AMSD. They do a lot, a lot of lobbying and work down at the State Capitol. They're heavily invested in that. They are good at producing information. I think that's helpful to us. They update us on legislative changes that are happening down at the State Capitol. And from my lens, and I'll let you comment on that, Superintendent Stenvik seemed to be very knowledgeable and, and easy to work with. So, from, from my seat, and I'd love to hear from yours, I think this is worth our membership fees. And we will, this will be an action item, and I'm trying to see if, what the exact, this will be in, here's the invoice. The total amount is $8,508 for this coming year. So, do you have things to add?
Yeah, I've only been superintendent during the pandemic. And during the pandemic, Executive Director Scott Kruenquist from AMSD hosted weekly Zoom meetings with about 40 people, mostly superintendents, but then some other lobbyists and, you know, the head, the Executive Director of MASA and things like that, which means they provided a space for information sharing, for support. They would bring in outside experts. They brought in the Governor, Governor Walls. They brought in the, you know, the health experts in, in the state to present to us, to keep us up to date when there were, when there are certain issues happening in other school districts at the Board level or other tragedies that have happened, widespread. widespread, that was the place to come together. So in addition to all of the incredible resources that we use and I pass along to the board in, in the packets, they're, you know, they organize some of us going down to the Capitol to talk about the cross subsidy and where are red and. So I find them to be very, very beneficial. And personally, I have texted Executive Director Scott Kruenquist and emailed numerous times and I get almost an immediate response. So as, as a person who came on new during the pandemic, I've found them to be invaluable.
All right. Questions about our AMSD membership?
So do you feel like you get things from these guys that you don't get from like MSBA? And like, this would be kind of like your MSBA sort of deal? Like this is your group of people?
That's a really good comparison. Yeah. Yep. It's, so there's, it's a lot of lobbying at the, at the state legislature. So, and a lot of information on upcoming bills that are gonna impact, that could potentially impact schools. They've worked a lot of connections in the, in the state. So they worked, for example, when there's incredible racial harm happening within the state high school league, right, with our athletics. They've, they connect with superintendents and then draft letters to be sent out and they partner with MSBA, MASA. And there's a rural version as well. So yeah, they really, really go to bat for us, but then also they feed me with a lot of knowledge on a weekly basis. And then on those monthly meetings, every time there's legislators, different representatives there with, you know, and we're able to ask questions of them or sometimes the secretary, secretary of state comes and. So it's, it's a huge source of knowledge flow. That they provide.
Oh, sorry. It's, the information they provide is pretty top notch. They seem to have their finger on the pulse of what our metro school districts want to hear about. They do a lot of surveys and information gathering or they'll bring in experts from the University of Minnesota who have recently done long-term studies or, or just blip data on certain things. For example, the, all the letters training that you might be hearing about from the state government right now, or from the state, yeah, from the state government. And some of, some of our teachers are actually participating in.
Yeah, quite a number.
Training. So I, for me, it was really good to hear directly from some people why this is happening, what's actually being taught. And so it was a good learning experience also. I found it to be valuable. Laura?
I've asked a lot of those same questions over the years and I, I've found that, that administrators really, any, anytime that there is a, there's a significant legislative change, that AMSD really has analyzed the, the impact ahead of time and has a ready answer on how it can affect the schools. Whereas MSBA is just not quite as fast. So being able to get those ready answers when there's a change in the funding formula or something is, is a huge resource because we, we've, we have to follow and make sure that we're doing things correct, correctly. So making sure we have the best knowledge available in the shortest amount of time is, is really, really incredibly valuable.
I think AMSD is thinking of the broad impact of policy change where MSBA, we're really getting our, like how legally how our policies need to change, like our specific policies. We're doing a lot of interaction. This is a really good question though, because you mentioned all the acronyms. Well, we're a part of this, this organization for $5,000, this organization for $8,000. The question I always ask and I, I used to ask more is, could, do we need this information? Could we hire for this for less? And it's always met with, no, we could not hire someone to know what this organization knows for $8,500. That's been something I've thought about.
Yeah, I think that was kind of my, like, I don't feel like we're a big enough school district to be lobbying, especially when it's not that effective. And so like, if that's the point, then I'm not necessarily in for it. But if, if you're getting like what you're talking about where a policy happens and we have to react and these guys are helping you do that, like that, feels like that has a lot more usefulness to me. So thanks for explaining that.
When it does come to lobbying though, this is where this actually benefits us because it's a large group. We're talking how many school districts? I don't even know. I guess.
Thirty-eight to forty, I think.
Yeah, I think they might've said forty. So school districts coming together have a lot more, because they write a platform every year, which the member districts vote on. Is this gonna be our platform? And they offer members to come in and, and discuss language surrounding those things. What are our top priorities? And then they kind of give the, the legislatures our top priorities in education this year. And so I would say they were like crucial in putting the cross subsidies on the map in the legislatures over the years, different things like that. So. It, I think for a small district, it's actually quite good because we actually have a voice. It gives us part of a voice. So.
And it's a really large group that gets together too, which is, which is really nice. I, I did that for a couple of years back when I was first on the board. It's a great way of, of networking and getting more into the deep dive of things that can affect the school but are not necessarily known. And all of the legislation that affects school districts is actually available on their website. And, and different, you know, and different recommendations and stuff on how, how those, the, the pending legislation could be improved, you know? So that, that, that's a great resource too. But just having that phone call that you can make and get that instant answer is, I really think is the, is the most crucial benefit that we have, you know, rather than finding out, you know, two months later that you've been doing it wrong. You know, because the, the legislation is sometimes a little, everybody knows, sometimes it isn't always obvious what they actually mean. So.
Legislation. All right. Any more questions? All right. This will be back at our next meeting as an action item, which brings us to action items. So we'll move on to our one action item for this evening, which is the MSBA membership fee. And so the recommended motion is to renew the district's membership in the Minnesota School Board Association for the 2022, 2023 school year and to authorize payment of dues in the amount of $8,756. Authorize the payment of board book subscription of $2,100 and to authorize payment of $750 to renew the policy service for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, for a total of $11,606. Looking for someone to move that motion forward.
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
Lorian, discussion? Laura?
And just to comment, MSBA is a great, is a great resource for us. I mean, just the ability to network with other, with other school districts, their leadership conferences always, is always extremely informative and timely. And it's free to members. And, and the policies, having the policies, I mean, although they give you the rough draft of the policies, we can always fashion those. We don't have to start from scratch, although we have in the, in the past. So I, I do believe that this is a, a good investment for us being able to stay very current in, in our work here.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. That brings us to board topics. I'll kick it off to say thank you to the Blooming Heights team for the pears. These are the cutest pears. I feel like they should be like in an art class. They're like beautifully.
Beautifully rendered.
They're, they are. They're beautifully human. Is that the word you would use to say the coloration of them? I don't know.
We're gonna go with it. Sounds good.
Sounds, sounds about right. Other, other maybe more pertinent board topics? All right. Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at, what? I'm gonna save it, Mary. I'm gonna leave you guessing. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 8:90.